Welcome to the Thursday, April 5th, Temple City Council meeting. If you'll please rise. Father Tom Chamberlain with Our Lady of Glorify Church will lead us in our invocation, and Mr. Judson Quicksaw will lead us into place.
And let us pray. Almighty God, we come together and we ask your blessing upon this city council and upon all who are here today. May you guide them with your Holy Spirit, Spirit of knowledge and counsel, of wisdom, fortitude, of piety, and of fear of the Lord in all of their deliberations or discussions and in their decisions that they make today. Lord, on this Thursday, we remember the last Thursday in Jesus' life, in the last night of his life, when he taught us a very important lesson about authority, as he who had all authority in heaven and on earth washed the feet of his twelve apostles and gave them an example. We pray also that all who have authority, and especially those in our city council today, will always imitate this example of our Lord in humble service to God, of their fellow men and women, and always do everything for the glory and the honor of God, and for the true well-being of all whom they serve. And all of this we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one reason, one god, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Well, as you can see by the great crowd we have tonight, there are a lot of people to recognize this evening, so we have several recognitions to do tonight. And we will start off recognizing a group that is here from Germany. We have a great group of kids here tonight, and I will make my best effort to pronounce your names correctly and your school, so don't laugh too terribly hard. Feel free to correct me. We have some certificates that we would like to present to you, so as we recognize you for being here, and as I read the proclamation welcoming you, if you'll please come forward, along with Mrs. Berlin and your teachers from Germany, if you will please come forward. And I'm going to present you with your certificate and ask the mayor, Portem, to please present a pin from the city of Temple to each of you. And so, at this time, if you'll please come forward, and these will be the students from the Gymnasium der Stadt Kerpen. Is it okay? All right. Thank you very much. You'll come forward and let me present this proclamation to you. Whereas, the city of Temple is honored to join with the Temple Independent School District on this occasion of recognizing the 12th anniversary of the exchange between Temple High School and the Gymnasium der Stadt Kerpen. And whereas, this outstanding program has served to expand the knowledge and experience of many students by giving them the opportunity to learn about each other's customs and countries. And whereas, the citizens of Temple desire to extend best wishes for many more successful years of this program, and commend those participating students for their dedication, teamwork, and commitment to excellence in all they do. Now therefore, I, William A. Jones III, Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, do hereby recognize the 12th anniversary of the exchange between Temple High School and Gymnasium der Stadt Kerpen, and I urge all citizens to recognize the outstanding experience for students that this program has provided and will continue to provide as the two programs work together in this invaluable partnership. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, this fifth day of April of 2007. Mrs. Berlin, let me present this to you. Mrs. Nella Berlin is a German teacher at Temple High School and has been responsible for bringing this program to Temple for all these years, and we appreciate you so much. And we will have another proclamation, so we can present that to the teachers and the students of Gymnasium der Stadt Kerpen. Okay? All right. Good. Thank you. And that was the easy part. Next, I have certificates for each of the guests we have, and I'm going to proclaim each of you honorary citizens of the city of Temple. And let me read one of these certificates. I will not read all of them. They all read the same with the exception of the name. So, if you will please come forward when I read your name, if you happen to be here. If you're not here, I will hold these certificates for those and let you take those with you. Whereas, the city of Temple desires to designate, and this one is Christine von Frieden, an honorary citizen. She is one of the teachers. Whereas, Christine von Frieden is most deserving of this special honor. And now therefore, I, William A. Jones III, Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, do hereby recognize Christine von Frieden as an honorary citizen of the city of Temple, Texas, and henceforth Christine von Frieden shall be entitled to the recognition and honor accompanying such citizenship by the authority of the laws of the city of Temple, Texas, the state of Texas, and the United States of America, dated this fifth day of April of 2007, signed by Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, and attested to by the city secretary, Clyde Ed Ninger. So, and I guess Christine is signed here. Correct? Matthias Liedner? Yeah? Okay. And you are welcome, the teachers, please, come forward.
Yeah, I'm one of the teachers.
Welcome. Christian Eisenlohr?
Christian Eisenlohr.
Christian Eisenlohr. Pia Bongard? Was that close? Yeah? Thank you. Welcome. Felix Koots? Glad you're here. And then just stay up, please, so we can get a picture of all of you. Julia Dick? Yeah? You're going to pronounce your name correctly? Yeah? Welcome. Edmund Dinges? Philip Flick-Eichenauzer? Philip? Yes? Eichenauzer? Eichenauzer. Eichenauzer. That's too difficult, huh? Okay.
Say it one more time.
Eichenauzer. Perfect.
That's just fine. Here's your name.
Hard enough time for Spanish after four years, so. Tim Font? I'm going to have to stick to first names, you think? Tim, welcome. Stefan Gorah? Stefan Gorah? No? Okay. Jamila Gomba? Jamila? Jamila. Okay. Welcome. Sophie Capas? Sophie Capas. Larissa Kahl? Sven Jalang? Jenny Clures? Hendrik? Wunskal? Soren? Maren Nitski? Say your last name. Nitski? Nitski? Okay. This may be the other one you told me about. Vorku? Yeah. Oskos? No, it's probably terrible. Say your name, folks.
Vorku, that's cool. Say it one more time. Vorku, that's cool. You did pretty good, Bill.
Thank you, ma'am. Zinho? Pa? Say your last name. Pa? Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Julian Cornheim? Isabel Schuler? And Manika Schweitzer? Okay. Who did we miss? Get everyone? Welcome them to Texas. And I would presume we have some Temple High School students here with us as well, or their counterparts, or their friends, or hosts for this time. If you'll please stand and let us recognize you, please. Thanks to all of you. We're glad you're here. We hope your stay is safe and fun, and that the exchange is worthwhile for you. Come back again.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything about your folks?
Why don't we throw the yes?
Yes, please.
Okay. On this day, to be honest, it was a wonderful day. We have become firemen of Temple this morning, and now we are honorary citizens of Temple. So, on that day, that's what I really call a day. So, thank you very much for that. And all this has been made possible by all those committed teachers of Temple High School, Mrs. Nella Berlin, and Mrs. Tripp. And of course, because of all those parents who are also here, and all those students who are really willing to participate in this exchange program, and really allowed students to be part in their home and to stay with their families. And I really would like to thank those who really did an effort there. And I really think we make a difference there, because we learn here a lot about cultural, it's a cultural experience. We learn a lot about the United States, the behavior of the people, and everybody around here. So, I hope we all have a nice stay here for the four weeks, and I just hope that when you come back to Germany, you also have a nice day there. So, thank you very much for having us here, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
The other certificates?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. It's a real pleasure. Come back. You will? Sure. Thank you. Please. Yeah? You are certainly welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, I certainly understand as well. Absolutely. Thanks, Neil. Thanks to the host students and to the parents for coming here as well. Yes, they do. Judy, thanks for leading us in the pledge.
Okay, our next recognition, I think I saw Miss Karen Ullman come in here a moment ago, so Karen, if you'll come up and bring your Campfire Boys and Girls up. We want to recognize a very special annual event that we have coming up.
Welcome. Hi, Karen. I'm doing well. May I apologize to you and the city council and the audience, because for the first time in eight years, I had 5:30 on my calendar instead of five.
Oh, well, we're in good shape.
All right.
We'll work out. It's fine. Well, let me present this proclamation, and then I'll let you tell us about the event coming up, okay? All right. From the office of the mayor, whereas Campfire USA Tejas Council will sponsor Absolutely Incredible Kid Day on April 11th of 2007. Whereas, Campfire USA Tejas Council has issued a call to action, asking every adult in America to write a letter to a child or children on that day. Whereas, Campfire USA Tejas Council has established the goal that every child receive a letter on April 11th of 2007. Whereas, through contemporary programs and by speaking out on issues affecting youth and their families, Campfire USA Tejas Council helps youth cope with their changing world. And whereas, Campfire USA Tejas Council is commended for the invaluable programs offered to young people in Temple, Texas, and for many services these young people perform for their community through Campfire. And now therefore, I, William H. Jones III, Mayor of the city of Temple, do hereby proclaim April 11th of 2007 as Absolutely Incredible Kid Day in the city of Temple, Texas. And I urge all citizens to join with the Campfire USA, the Tejas Council, in its efforts to encourage every adult in America to write a letter to a child or children on this special day to let them know they are special, loved, and important. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, on this fifth day of April of 2007. Karen, thank you for being here again. Thank you for all you do for our gift. Thanks. You please, absolutely. Introduce her.
If I could introduce our Campfire youngsters here. We have Tristan Boss, who's in Adventure Level and has the blue vest, Marissa Sinclair, who's also Adventure Level, and then Alton Sinclair, who's in our Discovery Level and has ceremonial attire that they get whenever they're older. And I'd like to encourage those of you, if you haven't heard about our Absolutely Incredible Kids Celebration, it is April the 11th at the Bell County Expo Center from 11:30 to 1:00. And we have ten youngsters. Nomination forms were sent out to all area schools and organizations, and we have ten youngsters that were selected to be honored as Absolutely Incredible Kids, as well as some adults that have supported youngsters. The adults that are going to be honored are Dr. Vivian Baker, superintendent of Bell County ISD, Bob McQueen from here in Temple, and then General Pete Taylor from the Colleen area. Also, Dr. Dawn and Julie Cawthon with the ACT, Aware Central Texas Organization, which has to do with prevention of child abuse and neglect, and our own SPJST that's here in the home office here in Temple. So, if anybody would like to see about getting reservations, just call 773-6614. And we're very quietly, as you all go on with your meeting, going to hand out some stationery that you could write a letter to your own Absolutely Incredible Kid. And I do encourage you to do that. Kids need to be told how special they are, and how unique, and how loved they are. And I know Joni has several grandchildren that she can write letters to, and probably some of the rest of you have grandchildren you can write letters to also. So, thank you very much, and again, we apologize for front and behind.
That's okay. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Tristan, Marissa, and Alton, thank you again for being here, and a couple of you have been here for several years with us. I think Marissa and Alton have been here for several years, so appreciate you coming back. Tristan, thanks for being with us. And the next item on the agenda is, again, another recognition, a very important one for us in the city of Temple. Recognition of individuals and businesses for their support of various fall and winter events sponsored by the Parks and Leisure Services Department. Mr. Shakura is going to lead us in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I guess it really seems appropriate to do this, our recognitions tonight, on top of everything else that's going on. It's really, I guess, a special night here in Temple. We do have a little bit of catching up to do in some of our presentations tonight. It's actually for some hard work and support that's gone on in the past few months, and we'd like to take the time to do that. And I think I'd like my staff to come up first that are here, because they have worked alongside these various sponsors and volunteers. And we've got Kathy here, Kathy Hall from Senior Center, Kevin and Chuck, Tracy and Anna Foster. I'm losing track of everybody, but I think that's it. And Aiken, stand up here and help me do this. The first group we'd like to recognize, Kay Welch and Greg Rhodes, if you'd like to come up, from Slotsky's. Slotsky's Deli and Maggie Moose. As you know, fairly new businesses in town, at least in terms of some of the others that have been here much longer, but have come on board with us in 2006 and continue in 2007 a very big way. They became sponsors of all our events last year, and helped out with several of them, including our Focus on Health Wellness Campaign, which was a year-long program, and they participated throughout the year with all the events we did. The Temple Triathlon, the T and Up Temple Golf Tournament, the Jingle Bell Fun Run, the Father Daughter Dance, and are already committed and helping out with this year's Senior Games, which are going to be held in October. They are a great example, I think, of a corporate partnership, and we are very, very pleased with their sponsorship, and thank them very much. As you know, for the past, I guess, three or four years now, the city has taken on responsibility of the Christmas parade, and that was passed us over from the chamber. But the chamber didn't just leave us, they also gave us a whole lot of support, and there are several people we'd like to recognize tonight, and several of them are from the chamber who would help with the chamber. And the first two I'll call up are Jim Pigpen and Kendall Young, and I'll call them together because in my mind, they're joined at the hip like twins. Believe me, we could not, we would not be able to do this event without these two gentlemen. They are our backbone, and we are very appreciative of that. They also had a gentleman who is not here tonight sort of help this year as longtime city supporter and been with the city worker, and now he's out in the private sector. But Tony Henness came on board and helped them, and Tony couldn't be here tonight. But gentlemen, I greatly appreciate your help, and I know this lady does too, and without it, we could not do the parade. Thank you.
We appreciate her. Does she get a raise?
She has her high heels on tonight, so she does. That's all right. Okay, and also, I think they are here? Is Myron here?
Yes.
Myron Masecki from the amateur radio club. They have also been longtime with this parade, helped with the organization of it, keep everybody in line, and Myron, we're very grateful to your support.
Thank you.
Okay. These guys not only help out with the parade, but as you know, they're everywhere, and the community as a whole is in the big debt. And that's the red carpet ambassadors, if you want to come on up. There's a few of them here. Ted's going to accept the award for them, but they have been with the parade with us and stuck with us, by us to help get it organized and run it. And guys, we really appreciate that. Thank you. And Community Emergency Response Team, do not have a representative?
Biff is not here tonight.
Okay, do not have a representative here, but these guys also came with us when we took the parade over, and stuck with us, and are very much with crowd control. Lonzo, you want to accept it for them? Okay. Biff Daughtry was going to accept it, but could not be here tonight, but Lonzo?
He's joining the church, his church is Monday, Thursday, so he could not.
Okay. Lonzo Wallace, our fire chief, will accept for them. Thank you. Thanks, Lonzo. Thank you, folks. We all appreciate it, but most certainly Anna does for all you do. Okay. We just were able to do a little bit of remodeling, actually a lot of remodeling, at our Senior Citizens Center, and that was because of a group that actually has been a supporter also of the department, going way back to when we got involved with senior citizens, probably about in the late 90s. And Jack Morse, if you'll come up on behalf of Senior Citizens, Inc., appreciate that. They donated some funds, matching funds, to recently get the building done there, but also helped as a sponsorship of our Senior Citizens Dinner at Christmas time, where we feed over 600 seniors. And Jack, I really appreciate the support you guys have done, stuck with us. The other corporate sponsor we'd like to recognize, and then these folks have been here quite a while, much longer than Slotsky's and Maggie Moose, is HEB. And if Ed and Brenda and Ron can come up. Ed Page, who is the district store operations manager out of Waco. Brenda Johnson with the Adams Street Store, and Ron Borland, who's with 31st Street Store. HEB is also a big-time sponsor of this department and many projects, including the Father Daughter Dance, Halloween Spook Fest, the Hot Summer Sounds Concert Series, July 4th, and of course, the HEB Feast of Sharing, which occurs at Christmas time in the Mayberry Center, where we feed over 3,000 members of the community. They are very, very, very supportive of this community. Some very major dollars have come in because of them, and we could not do the activities we do without HEB and guys and ladies. We very much appreciate that and your support to our department. Thank you very much. And lastly, we'd like to recognize the Culture Activity Center, and Terry Mathew, if you come up as their director. We have a sort of a partnership, I guess you could say, even a financial sponsorship with the CAC, where they, we help each other out and sponsor, but the CAC has gone way above and beyond any financial commitment, and as I've told our advisory board, in my opinion, it's because of this lady here, Terry Mathew. She has certainly led by example the way I think two agencies can work together and make things happen. The largest event we do at the Mayberry Center every couple of years now is the Woodturners Event, and that brings in about how many people? About 1,200 people who stay in our hotels for several days during that period. We could not do that event without the CAC. Our building is too small. They would actually like to move here if we could find a way to enlarge the facility or make our partnership grow always into the future, because we're ideally located for them. But we really do take over the CAC. We very much disrupt them. We bring a lot of extra electricity and stuff into their building and make it work. But also, we recently just did our employee awards, and we've always tried to make this real nice and special for the staff, but I think this year, what we were able to do is go into the CAC, go into their theater, and use one of their rooms for dinner before that, and the staff just were overwhelmed. And again, it was Terry and her staff who came in and made that happen, just not giving the facility. And Terry, I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
The last recognition we have is to a young lady, who's actually one of our participants. And she is a very outstanding young lady, and I like to call Becca Coleser up, if she'll come up. She is a nine-year-old athlete who has taken part in the putt, pass, and kick contest that's sponsored by the NFL, and has won our competition, and has gone on much farther than that. She has gone on to the team competition beyond that, which took place in Houston, and won that. And then she went to the national championships in New Orleans, and placed third. She's a very outstanding lady. And this is probably the furthest any. They are a great example, I think, of a corporate partnership, and we are very, very pleased with their sponsorship and thank them very much. Thank you. As you know, for the past, I guess, three or four years now, the city has taken on responsibility of the Christmas Parade, and that was passed us over from the Chamber. But the Chamber didn't just leave us, they also gave us a whole lot of support, and there are several people we'd like to recognize tonight, and several of them are from the Chamber who would help with the Chamber. And the first two I'll call up are Jim Pickpen and Kendall Young, and I'll call them together because in my mind, they're joined at the hip like twins. Believe me, we could not, we would not be able to do this event without these two gentlemen. They are our backbone, and we are very appreciative of that. They also had a gentleman who is not here tonight sort of help this year as longtime city supporter and been with the city worker, and now he's out in the private sector. But Tony Henness came on board and helped them, and Tony couldn't be here tonight. But gentlemen, I greatly appreciate your help, and I know this lady does too, and without it, we could not do it, pray. Thank you.
We appreciate her. Does she get a raise?
She has her high heels on tonight, so she does. Okay, and also, I think they are here? Is Myron here?
Yes.
Myron Masecki from the amateur radio club. They have also been longtime with this parade, helped with the organization of it, keep everybody in line, and Myron, we're very grateful to your support.
Thank you.
These guys not only help out with the parade, but as you know, they're everywhere, and the community as a whole is in the big debt. And that's the red carpet ambassadors, if you want to come on up. There's a few on here. Ted's going to accept the award for them, but they have been with the parade with us and stuck with us by us to help get it organized and run it. And guys, we really appreciate that. Thank you. And Community Emergency Response Team, do not have a representative?
Biff is not here tonight.
Okay, do not have a representative here, but these guys also came with us when we took the parade over and stuck with us and are very much with crowd control. Lonzo, you want to accept it for them? Okay. Biff Daughtry was going to accept it but could not be here tonight, but Lonzo?
He's joining the church this Monday Thursday, so he could not.
Okay, but Lonzo Wallace, our fire chief will accept for them. Thank you. Thanks, Lonzo. Thank you, folks. We all appreciate it, but most certainly Anna does for all you do. Okay, we just were able to do a little bit of remodeling, actually a lot of remodeling, at our Senior Citizens Center, and that was because of a group that actually has been a supporter also of the department, going way back to when we got involved with senior citizens, probably about in the late 90s. And Jack Morse, if you'll come up on behalf of Senior Citizens, Inc., appreciate that. They donated some funds, matching funds to recently get the building done there, but also helped as a sponsorship of our Senior Citizens Dinner at Christmas time, where we feed over 600 seniors. And Jack, I really appreciate the support you guys have done and stuck with us. The other corporate sponsor we'd like to recognize, and then these folks have been here quite a while, much longer than Schlotzsky's and Maggie Moose, is HEB. And if Ed and Brenda and Ron can come up. Ed Page, who is the district store operations manager out of Waco, Brenda Johnson with the Adams Street Store, and Ron Borland, who's with 31st Street Store. HEB is also a big-time sponsor of this department and many projects, including the Father Daughter Dance, Halloween Spook Fest, the Hot Summer Sounds Concert Series, July 4th, and of course, the HEB Feast of Sharing, which occurs at Christmas time in the Mayberry Center, where we feed over 3,000 members of the community. They are very, very, very supportive of this community. Some very major dollars have come in because of them, and we could not do the activities we do without HEB and guys and ladies. We very much appreciate that and your support to our department. Thank you very much. And lastly, we'd like to recognize the Culture Activity Center, and Terry Mathieu, if you'll come up as their director. We have a sort of a partnership, I guess you could say, even a financial sponsorship with the CAC, where they, we help each other out and sponsor, but the CAC has gone way above and beyond any financial commitment. And as I've told our advisory board, in my opinion, it's because of this lady here, Terry Mathieu. She has certainly led by example the way I think two agencies can work together and make things happen. The largest event we do at the Mayberry Center every couple of years now is the Wood Turners Event, and that brings in about how many people? About 1,200 people who stay in our hotels for several days during that period. We could not do that event without the CAC. Our building is too small. They would actually like to move here if we could find a way to enlarge the facility or make our partnership grow always into the future because we're ideally located for them. But we really do take over the CAC. We very much disrupt them. We bring a lot of extra electricity and stuff into their building and make it work. But also, we recently just did our employee awards, and we've always tried to make this real nice and special for the staff, but I think this year, what we were able to do is go into the CAC, go into their theater and use one of their rooms for dinner before that, and the staff just were overwhelmed. And again, it was Terry and her staff who came in and made that happen, just not giving the facility. And Terry, I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
The last recognition we have is to a young lady who's actually one of our participants. And she is a very outstanding young lady, and I like to call Rebecca Coleserup, if she'll come up. She is a nine-year-old athlete who has taken part in the putt, pass, and kick contest that's sponsored by the NFL, and has won our competition, and has gone on much farther than that. She has gone on to the team competition beyond that, which took place in Houston and won that. And then she went to the national championships in New Orleans and placed third. She's a very outstanding lady. And this is probably the furthest any athlete has gone from Temple into this national competition. And she's a very super kid, and we very much want to recognize her and her family back there, if you'd like to stand up. You're a great athlete, and thank you for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ken. Congratulations, Rebecca. That's really incredible. We're very proud of you. Thank you. And we recognize a lot of volunteers and organizations that support us, but I have to say, we've got a super staff, and when Kendall and Jim were up here, they turned around and said, "That's really what helps to make it work," is what a great staff we have. I know that firsthand just from the work we do on the Bluman Temple Festival and the great success it was last year and the things that we're doing this year, and that's coming up just a week from this weekend. We appreciate all that you all do, and Anna and Kevin, and more than I even know or can name, behind the scenes to make all the events possible. You guys are awesome. So thanks a lot. We appreciate all you do. Well, that was a lot of recognitions this evening, so that's all a good part of what we do in this community. So thanks for being here for that. Next opportunity is an opportunity for public comment. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received at this portion of the meeting, and the comments are limited to three minutes. No action or comment will be taken by the City Council, and I do not believe anyone has signed up to speak this evening. So we'll go on to the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda is consent. All items listed under this section, consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council on any item, it may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of the council member, and it will be considered separately. This is item four, and items A through, looks like Q tonight. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda for presentation, for discussion, or for purpose of voting? There's four, A through Q. If there are no items to remove from consent, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good motion, a second to approve the consent agenda item four, A through Q, for the discussion, if being non-mem, subpoenaed.
Councilmember Gieders?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnan?
Aye.
Councilmember Snadens?
Aye.
On to the regular agenda. Next item, item five, is a first reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending an existing planned development district, PDD, which was adopted under ordinance number 2006-4090, with a zoning change from single-family one, and that's proposed Lot 1, Block 2 of the Stonegate 3 subdivision, and two-family, the proposed Lot 1, Block 1 of Stonegate 3 subdivision, to a PDD planned development neighborhood service on 2.11 acres in block 6060B, city addition, and the proposed Stonegate 3 subdivision. Mr. Dolan?
Mayor, this is an amendment to an existing planned development district, and what you have in front of you this evening is to look at a planned development district for neighborhood service, and it's the proposed Stonegate Addition Number Three. And you had looked at a PD previously that contained residential properties for the areas highlighted in the shaded color, and what we have in front of us this evening is to request to look at a planned development district for neighborhood service. And this would be where the properties would get access from the internal subdivision and would be looking at for proposed retail uses. The neighborhood service district is the most limited commercial district we have in the zoning ordinance, and what you see for the binding site plan that would be adopted as a part of the ordinance, if approved on its second reading, shows the ingress and egress coming from the internal collector street with sufficient parking and landscaping and building placement for the proposed commercial uses. Once the project comes forward with a building permit, a final site plan will be submitted, but the circulation and access and landscape areas show what will be done in the general vicinity. The planned development district contains different evaluations or steps that need to be reviewed for the planned development district in the city ordinance, and essentially it looks at for the points of ingress, egress, the circulation type, height, landscaping, et cetera. For the adequacy of public facilities, which should be reviewed as part of a PD, it shows the existing utilities to come into the subdivision and the proposed utilities for water and sewer to be able to come throughout. Again, 31st Street borders the proposed subdivision and the planned development district for the neighborhood service, and you've got the right-of-way for HK Island Parkway that will come through there. Notices were mailed out to property owners within 200 feet of the area. None opposed the request. We did receive one request which approves the request. Again, staff recommends approval of the planned development district for the neighborhood service subject to the following amendments. And essentially, it's to remove the district from the planned development district, which were zoned, single-family, and then to propose those, to change those to the neighborhood service. The one item that did come forward through the review of the Development Review Committee, the applicant is aware of it and does agree with it. If you look at the bottom line of the bottom series, TXU Electric requires a wider rear yard setback of 15 feet. The ordinance only requires 10, and that's just in case of the three-phase overhead power that may need to be able to come through that again. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at it at their meeting March 19th and unanimously recommended approval. Commissioner Carruthers did abstain because he owns a property in this area. And again, this is only the first reading. The second reading would move forward for your next available meeting, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Counsel, any questions on this item for staff?
On the site plan, are there sidewalks going down HK Island?
Yes, sir.
Parkway? And down 31st?
That plat will come forward to you at your next meeting. If approved on the first reading, what you have done in the past is that the final plat will come forward to you at your next meeting, but the circulations are being planned along the internal circulation area.
Any further questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing, and this time I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one listening to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good motion, a second for approval of the first reading on the item for a proposed change to the zoning. Is there a further discussion? There being none, mem, subpoenaed.
Councilmember Gieders?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnan?
Aye.
Councilmember Snadens?
Aye.
Item six, first reading and public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one financing plan for fiscal year 2007 to 2022 to include redesignation of projects within the project plan, bond proceeds, future year bond payments, and the following new projects. A is a railroad spur extension to Wendland Road to enable the development of the rail sites along Wilsonarc Drive. B is a bioscience park infrastructure development to enable the recruitment of bioscience businesses to the park. C is airport park infrastructure development to facilitate development of the area east of the airport, and D, southeast industrial park infrastructure development in the area of Lorain Avenue to open up sites in the park. Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Can you do this?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, we're going to, would like to cover this in two, I don't know, we have two members from the Reinvestment Zone Board here with us tonight. Perry Cloud's the chair of the Reinvestment Zone Board, and Gary Smith is a Zone Board member and also a kind of chair of the Finance Committee of the Reinvestment Zone. And tonight, the financing plan amendment, I would like first for introduce Mr. Perry Cloud, the chair of the Reinvestment Zone, to do a quick overview of the projects, and then I would like to cover the financing plan amendment that would finance those projects, and then other financing plan amendments.
Ms. Bernard? Mr. Cloud, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. We appreciate your support, and the Reinvestment Zone has been working on these projects for quite a while. We do have a projects group that has been very instrumental in coming up with the direction that we have been heading based on a master plan that was adopted in 1999 and then amended again in 2005. And then the financing committee has been working on these projects, and these are ones that we have strongly recommend to get some shovel-ready sites for new industry to come into town. The first project is Rail Park Phase One, which is north of Wilsonarc Drive, and what is shown in the red is currently under design and will be put in to provide rail service to Wilsonarc North Plant. The green lines next to it are for what we are proposing to put in on an additional rail spur to open up sites to be served by rail for future industries. All of the property here is either owned by the city, Reinvestment Zone, or the TDC, and the TDC is, the board has voted to allow this use of this property, so there will be no additional property required on this. The second phase, I'm sorry, timeline is briefly looked at, but we're looking at 14 months of construction plus the design time and bidding time on that. The next is in the Bioscience Park. The road that is currently under design for the extension of Old Howard Road from the Lake Road to the Airport Road is currently under design, and this, what we're showing here is to put a road in with sewer and water on the property that was the old TI property owned by the city of Temple now, which is across the creek from the Scott and White West Campus. This will allow the bioscience-type industries to come in and locate and give them shovel-ready sites with some lots already planted, ready to go, so when somebody comes in, they can get started very quickly. Here again, all the property is owned by the Reinvestment Zone, or rather, the city, so no additional property right-of-way will be required. The next item is for the Airport Park. Would be an extension of Industrial Boulevard past Old Howard Road, which was just completed. This road would be a feeder road, possibly into the future airport area in the future, but right now, we will be putting these other roads in along with a portion of the road up to the creekway to open up several lots for office-campus type of environment. One of the things that the master plan identified is to have different areas for different types of industries instead of putting a nice office complex right next to a major manufacturing and to separate those, and so this would be for our nice office complex out here. And here again, the property is owned by the city of Temple or Reinvestment Zone, so no property will be required. The next, or the last project is on the Southeast Industrial Park. The area that's shaded is owned by the city of Temple also, which is about 350 acres, and the red or orange line up toward the top would be rebuilding and extending Lorain Drive and providing water and sewer services to the 350 acres. And this would be envisioned for a large tract for a major manufacturer or somebody to come into. And here again, all the right-of-way is owned by the city, and so no right-of-way would be required. One of the things that has prompted us to accelerate some of our plans, where most of these projects have been in our projects and financing plan for the last couple of years, but we're seeing more and more industries, when they come to a town, they want shovel-ready sites, some that are ready to go right-of-way. The quickest timeframe on any of these projects is about 18 to 20 months, and so we need to get rolling on them so that we will have some sites on the ground that people can come to and facilitate getting new industry to Temple. Be happy to answer any questions on the projects.
Thank you, sir. Also, questions for Mr. Cloud?
Mr. Cloud, I just appreciate the vision and the forethought that your committee definitely has for our community. And I personally want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's a lot of people, and a lot of people involved, and the city staff is very much involved, and we certainly appreciate all their help and support. It's a group effort with a lot of people contributing to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no further comments? Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Can you go over the financing plan first?
Yes, I'd like to do a brief overview of the financing plan amendment. The amendment that is before you, it is an ordinance, requires two readings. It focuses on four years of the financing plan. The financing plan does actually stretch through the end of the Reinvestment Zone, which is year 2022. Within the amendments, there's a focus on the bond projects, what we consider non-bond projects, and then revenue updates related to the financing plan. There's a proposed bond issue in the financing plan that would finance the four projects that Mr. Cloud just went over, and that bond issue is $9.1 million. It is a combination tax and revenue, to be funded from revenues from within the Reinvestment Zone Number One. It's not a direct tax levy, even though the revenues are related to taxes, it's not a levy of taxes to issue this debt. There will be proposed a secondary pledge of the city tax. Capacity, debt capacity for the Reinvestment Zone was determined using a two-times coverage of revenues to cover the existing debt. The debt that is proposed to be issued would be a 15-year bond, which is the maximum amount the zone could do right now because of the remaining life of the zone. The assumptions we used were 5% net interest cost, and currently considering, based on construction, proposed construction schedules, an October 2007 closing date of these bonds. The next slide just shows kind of a detail of projects, the costs associated with the projects that Mr. Cloud just went over, the $9.1 million, or they totaled $9.1 million, and that also includes issuance costs and project contingencies. The rail spur Phase Two is about a $2.5 million project. The Bioscience Park is $2,840,000. The Airport Park, $2,757,000. And then the Southeast Industrial Park, total project cost is about $1,385,000. Next slide is we summarize other amendments proposed to the financing plan, which include non-bond projects. Some of these are clarification of existing line items in the financing plan. Others, the railroad repairs and maintenance, it's to add additional dollars to line items to repair railroad spur within the zone that's public infrastructure. And we've had a study completed and identified those spurs, and these are the dollars needed to complete the rehab or reconstruction of those existing spurs. There's additional monies being added to the green belt development along Pepper Creek that will be for total construction of that park of Phase One. We also are proposing adding additional funds to complete the outer loop Phase Two, moving some monies around for the gateway entrances and adding some additional funds to complete additional gateway entrances within the Reinvestment Zone, and then eliminating a contingency line item related to a reserve that we had for the Acer facility. In addition to these amendments I mentioned, we are proposing to update revenue estimates and calculating those. We used a 1% growth in increment values, which we consider conservative. This also helped us determine capacity, and the average net growth in the Reinvestment Zone revenues have been, or values have been about 2.7 over the past four years. And the bottom, what we consider the bottom line or dry powder available within the Reinvestment Zone funds, and remember, this is a special revenue fund. The funds collected within the Reinvestment Zone have specific restricted uses, and this is across the line for FY '07 through FY 2011. That ranges from $234,000 to close to $1.7 million. And that's assuming the revenue assumptions that I just went over. We add additional increment values, have more than a 1% growth in our increment values. increment values, have more than a 1% growth in our increment values, those amounts will increase. And within, next slide, please. Within your council packets or handouts, we included a financing plan and what we consider a detailed project plan. They're attached to your agenda item. As far as the financing presentation, that concludes that. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Counsel, do you have questions on the financing plan prior to going into the public hearing? If there are no questions, we'll move into the public hearing phase. This item requires a public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Questions or comments from the public? There being none, seeing no one wishing to speak, I will declare the public hearing closed. Let me first, before we call the question, thank Mr. Gary Schmidt, who's here with us, for your work. I know that you and the project team and committee, the finance group, as well as the Reinvestment Zone, spend a lot of time every month working on these plans, and we appreciate that. And we have David Patrick here as well, who's consulting staff, and we appreciate all the work that you've done, the time you spent with our committees and the Zone Board in putting this together. Thank you very much. Great job. Counsel, your pleasure on this item.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good motion, a second to approve item six, the first reading for the amendment of the tax increment financing reinvestment zone financing plan. Is there no further questions or comments? Senator Secretary?
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Potemtaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Next item is item seven, resolution. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing a contract with a consultant to assist the city in preparing an application for pass-through financing with the Texas Department of Transportation, and to serve as project manager for a related construction project for improvements to Loop 363 in West Temple, and declare an official intent to reimburse this expenditure made prior to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations for this project. Mr. Cloud?
Mayor, Counsel, we've placed aside a lot of agenda anticipation. We'd be prepared to give you a recommendation tonight. We're not quite there yet. The interviews were done last week with two firms, both very well-qualified firms. We're still gathering some information and expecting some information from those firms, so what I would suggest, and that is to table the sign, and we'll be prepared to make it back.
Thank you, Mr. Blackland. So, we have recommendation to table, item seven. Is there a motion?
Motion to table, a second.
Second.
Motion to second to table item seven. Comments or questions? Senator Secretary?
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Potemtaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item eight is some board appointments, the first item, and keep in mind, we'll take these separately. Consider adopting a resolution appointing members of the following city boards and commissions. I'm going to take the Tree Board first. This is a new committee established under our Tree ordinance that we passed in the last couple of months. It's a five-member board and two ex officio members. And it's structured in a way that Keep Temple Beautiful has an appointment. They've asked Mr. Alan Einbauten to serve in the capacity for a two-year term. Blackland Research and Extension Center has recommended Dr. Dennis Hoffman, and he is selected for a two-year term. Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board, Mr. Jack Barton, for a one-year term. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends Mr. Lloyd Thomas, the chair, to serve a one-year term, and an at-large member. There's one member at-large from the community, that's Mr. David Lockwood, and he would serve the three-year term. Ex officio members would be Mr. Michael Tuttle from TISD, and Denise Whitley from Belton Independent School District. So, those are the recommendations. I think the terms were established as a recommendation from staff to just take the one-year terms to be the city-appointed boards, the two-year terms to be from the community agencies, and the three-year term be the at-large. So, certainly welcome to any input from the council on that. But if you support those recommendations from those groups and the terms, which certainly entertain your motion at this time, Counsel.
Motion to approve all five members and the two ex officio members? Second.
Good. We have motion to second to appoint the members read and for the terms indicated. Is there further discussion? There being none, Senator Secretary?
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Potemtaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Item 8B is a Temple Public Safety Advisory Board. We have a position to fill there, but we don't have a recommendation at this time. There was a resignation from that board. And the Civil Service Commission, we've got a couple of people under consideration. They have not returned the forms at this point, so these two items will be considered a later date. We know that we actually have to table these items and confirm that recommendations at this point, so. Great. Counsel, is there no other items that you have, that I'm showing? Oh, okay. Yeah, Counsel, Mayor Potemtaw?
Mr. Butcher? Should we step it up here?
I'm just starting.
Tried running off, didn't you?
I am.
Put him on the train board, too.
I'm not thinking.
Chair in it?
Chris Butcher, I want to personally thank you, not only as a council member, but also as a citizen of this community. You have a wonderful water department. They all came together, and we had a major water break in this town. I want you to know, from someone who's very much involved with the hospital, the hospitals were very concerned, your briefing calmed everybody down, let everybody know what was going on, the extent of the break, and I personally want to, from the bottom of my heart, my water kept running, and I was very conservative, to say thank you.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate it, and on behalf of all of the city staff, not just only Public Works, but everybody pitched in, and that was my first real big opportunity since coming to work here, and I was really amazed at how everybody pitched in, and everybody helped, and it was, we got through it, and I'd like to thank the citizens, too, because they curtailed their water use so we could make it, and we did it as a team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for not running off.
Oh, well, thank you for, thank you for asking me to come back. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your leadership.
Also, Mayor Jones, I want you to realize that item N, in this agenda, was, consider adopting a resolution declaring the candidates for the May 12, '07 District One, city council member, and District Four city council election as unopposed and elected to office, therefore canceling the May 12, '07 General, City General Election. And I personally want to congratulate Mr. Jeter and Mr. Schneider.
Thank you.
Put up a list.
Anything else, Counsel? Staff? If there's nothing else, for the good of the city of Temple, we wish all of you a very blessed Easter weekend. We are adjourned.